That the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous people still connected to this land on which we gather. The council did not meet in closed session this evening, so we do not have a report. And we would like to invite our guests to join council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Mr. Scott Hill. Please come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Reverend Scott Hill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Hill. As is noted on our agenda, city council is prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under item one. But it presents an opportunity to provide important input on a public forum. The public is given an opportunity at this time to address city council on issues not listed on the agenda. And we do ask if anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item, please fill out a request to speak card and return it to the clerk. And once, you know, there is an item, there are no items though, either under the public see, under our public, which is only consent agenda. So if there are any questions brought up among the council members, and I will ask the clerk if there's a request to speak, we will take up those, that public comment. But if not, we will not take a public comment. And so also now in front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and we ask that all comments be limited to the specified number of minutes, which is three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety. So we request that there be no boos, or applause, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted and not, that is posted, and not speak in loud, threatening, or offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Now this brings us to item one, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. And each person has three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk?
Edith Gomez.
Thank you for the time. My name is Edith Gomez. I'm a Associate Vice President at the California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And in collaboration with the city of West Sacramento, we're hosting a business development program. It's called Accelerator Program. This program is specifically for future business owners or existing business owners. During this five-week program, we provide educational information such as what is the business license that they need to establish a business in West Sacramento, in the city of West Sacramento. We bring them opportunity to apply for business loans. And also we have business advisors that they can provide the one-on-one business session to the clients based on their needs. All these services, they're totally free and not cost, and they're being provided at the West Sacramento Community Center every Thursday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, from 5:00 to 6:00. And as I mentioned to you, I'm here to extend that invitation to each of you guys to come to these workshops and provide some support to the community. And also please to help us spread the word in the city of West Sacramento. There's a lot of residents who are looking to establish a business, but they don't have the tools, they don't have the guidance. And we're here to provide those guidance, those tools to the community so they can start building and they can start their own business. Or if they already have a business and they're going through a hard process of making payments or getting employees, we can guide them through the process so they can have a successful business. These first five weeks, which is start today, is in English. And then after that, we have another five weeks of workshops, which are totally in Spanish. Every single topic for each week is being presented by an expert on the topic. And also they have the opportunity to ask questions and get all their answers that they need to continue with their business. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Edith. If you can connect with our staff so that our Public Information Officer has information that we can post on our social media.
Of course. Thank you.
Oh, right there. He's back. Already posted. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for all the support and the opportunity.
Robin Davis.
Hello. I'm Robin, and I live in my 160-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. I'd like to share a quote that I have also shared at SAICOG from Zach Giffen, who was the host of a show called Tiny House Nation, and is a tiny home advocate who explained why many end up on our streets. He stated, "Nobody ends up on the streets all at once. People who find themselves with nowhere to go start a process of leaning on the support of friends or family. But after the third experience of staying in another person's home, people stop asking for help. This is because staying in another person's home is inherently an imposition to the host, and there is a deep indignity that comes with the experience of being the source of that type of stress on another person. It's why, after time, people would rather sleep in their car or in a tent than continue to go through the shame of that experience." The flip side is that for every homeless person sleeping on the street, there is a friend or family member whose heart is broken because they feel helpless to do anything about it. Tiny homes are not just an attainable housing solution. It is a logical way for friends and family to support one another. It's a tool to provide a far more dignified form of assistance for someone you love that doesn't produce nearly as much intrusion into one's lives as sleeping in one's home. It's not just a great way to help someone transition out of homelessness, it's a way to provide a safety net that can radically reduce the amount of people who end up sleeping on our streets. I am the person that does not want to impose, and I am also a family member whose heart is broken. I'm looking forward to getting any kind of update at all on the fate of my basic needs and how to move forward to get access to water affordably.
Maria Graalva.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I hope everybody feels terrible, especially the staff, especially the real estate developer sitting here for what you may have just witnessed. My name is Maria Graalva, Latino Information and Resource Center. I am District Two Advocate Representative. I wanted to thank the mayor for last time we were here, we passed the mental health resolution, and we saw a lot of emotions last time we were here. So I decided to use my time today to provide information about from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention on Mental Health. And so what is mental health? Well, mental health includes our emotional, psychological, social well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and act. It also helps determine how we handle stress, relate to others, and make healthy choices. Mental health is important at every stage of life, from childhood and adolescence through adulthood. Why is mental health important for overall health? Mental and physical health are equally important components for overall health. For example, depression increases the risk for many types of physical health problems, particularly longstanding conditions such as diabetes, heart disease, and stroke. Similarly, the presence of chronic conditions can increase the risk of mental health, especially knowing that you're gonna be homeless one day. I saw an article today that everybody is just one step away from being homeless. Can your mental health change over time? Yes, but I'm gonna save that for another time, if I may. And so I wanted to say, because of the state of condition of our city, I wanted to, and because as a city, as a populace, we're becoming to get more organized, and I wanted to encourage everyone to continue to do this. One of the things that we need to do for Robin, and we need to do it for Robin, because she's not strong enough to do it right now, we need to start an initiative. We're gonna be picking up signatures. We're gonna start an initiative, and so that we pick up, we're gonna pick up signatures so that we put an initiative on the ballot. We're also gonna do one for the port so that we can develop it and we can have revenue. The people are gonna do this because, you know, you guys are part of the silent generation, okay? You don't speak up, okay? Lucky for me, I was never silent. And we also want to put initiative where we're going to rename the Tower Bridge the Patwin People Bridge, okay? And so that is what I want to express today and tell the people not to give up hope, because we are gonna have tiny houses all over the place, and developers are not gonna win. Thank you so much.
Suzie, and I'm sorry, I can't make out the last name.
Good evening. I'm Suzie Satfen. I'm the Community Feud Program Manager with the Center for Land-Based Learning. I like to thank our organization is helping to address some of the issues that you just heard. We work, we have a mobile farmers market, of which the city of West Sacramento is one of our key partners, and just want to express our sincere gratitude for that. We have a mobile, our mobile farmers market just launched for its third season. We have four locations, actually five, Tuesdays at Bright Park, and I'm new to the position, so forgive me, but Margaret McDowell's Bright Park tomorrow and West Capitol Courtyard are tomorrow, 9:30 to 11:00 at Bright Park, 1:00 to 2:00 at West Capitol Courtyard, and then on Tuesdays at Margaret McDowell Manor, serving our senior citizens, 11:30 to 1:30, and then at Washington Courtyard, 2:30 to 4:00. We've had a lot of great success over the past few years, probably growing 20% each year with the number of customers who are coming through. 80% of them are using their SNAP benefits, and with those EBT cards, they get 50% off. What that basically, you know, equates to is if they spend $20 on local produce, they can get an extra $20. So that $20 becomes $40 without that market match dollars. From a mental health perspective, it's been proven that food access, you know, contributes a lot to mental health. If we can bring this fresh local produce to these communities that have a food access issue, or a low income, or a disadvantage, hopefully our organization is helping make an impact, and the city of West Sacramento is helping, you know, in that mission as well. So thank you so much, and it's open to all. So if you can make it, I can leave some cards, or you can check out our website that goes over here. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred Melbourne.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm gonna start off by saying I hear your words for the land acknowledgement, Mayor. But again, I reiterate that, just words, we would like some action and have representation on all commissions and any panels on the city of West Sacramento so we can have true representation and get some acknowledgement. We just recently had a presentation by the Native Heritage Museum in the back by the Rivers Gate community. It was awesome. So many elders were out there in the morning, but I would relay from them that their biggest concern was that they would love to see it done in their lifetime. That was the biggest concern, having it done in their lifetime, because this has been going on and on. We know that there's been some money promised here and there, but the city of West Sacramento doesn't have anything to acknowledge the First Nations people of this land. And I did hear Maria Graalva state that she would like to get a petition going to rename Tower Gateway Parkway to Patwin Tower, or Patwin Lane, whatever. I'm total agreement with that. So, but I do come here with a lot of concerns on my mind. Definitely, I'm the founder and director of Three Sisters Gardens, where a food sovereignty effort here in West Sacramento, growing a revolution, rebuilding urban soil. So, and last year, we donated 22,000 pounds of food that we gave to the community free. This year, we're close to about 9,000 already since January. And Las Casitas is one of our main recipients of this, as well as many other homes that we're adding every week throughout. And we would love to have some support from the city council to get you all to come out and see our sights and what we're doing, how the distribution is going, how the food is growing, and how the youth are performing out there in the community, the at-potential-high-promised youth that could be doing anything else, but definitely creating a lot of opportunities out there. And I do feel for some reason or other, I'm gonna mention that, I have to ground myself and ask myself why I do this on a regular basis, why I come here and I feel like there's so much opposition, right? It's because it's the right thing, because it's the right thing, and I'm gonna keep doing it. I'm gonna keep raising my voice and approaching you guys with respect, email after email if I have to. I hope that you guys can come forward to the farms and see the work that's going on in your community. We're turning a food desert into a food oasis. We can do this with a matter of dollars, changing it. We don't need all these other entities from the outside coming in. Born and raised here, native indigenous, First Nations, Fort Pec, Centipont Sioux. I support Robin and her tiny homes, and we need affordable housing for all. There has to be ways to get people off the streets that aren't being thought of right now. We need to support folks from falling into despair. We're all one step away maybe from being hurt. I don't know about you guys, but I do still receive EBT. I still receive services, you guys. Look, anybody can look up my stuff and you guys can find all that. So we need support, you guys. You guys are our stakeholders, we're looking to you. We need more investment in the Bright Master Plan. That thing is lacking, we're down about 20 million at least, you guys. We need real investment in Bright and broader. So thank you, guys. And we'd also like to get the Brother Bright Neighborhood Association, the Buena Vista Building Open over in Bright, you guys. We need some support with that, some permit problems that still not open, you guys. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Guy Stevenson.
First and foremost, I'd like to say, nice to see you, council members and mayor. Bobby and Billy and those guys with Public Works, they do such an awesome job. And I said this before, but I've seen some of their work, and they're doing really a big, good thing for the city. They're really making it look good, especially coming into the city. So I give them big props for that. The other reason I'm up here is because they got a new drug out, and I don't know if you're aware of it. It's called Blue. It's fentanyl with tranquilizer in it. And I went to San Diego just like over a week ago and spent three days, and I was, we were getting training from a DEA agent that was actually familiar with this drug. It's really, really bad. And people are dying. Philadelphia is going through it, LA is going through it, the bigger cities, Seattle, and people are just dying. And my suggestion, and I've, I wanted to suggest this to one of your policymakers here, Larry Lee, is that I think that anybody that works for the city should have NORCAN on them, period. Because NORCAN can save a life. And people are important, whether they have a substance abuse problem or not, they deserve to live. But fentanyl with this new drug, which is, I think it's mixed with a horse tranquilizer, with fentanyl will kill you. I am concerned because there's been at least 10 ODs just in Yellow County this year from that drug. Some of it right down the street, actually. So I think that, you know, that people really need to carry that NORCAN. I carry it. You know what, I, because I think it's important that people have that medication, to give it to them, it comes in a nasal, because it can save somebody's life. And everybody's life is important, no matter who they are, or whatever drug problem they are, have an alcohol problem. But this new drug, it's very, very dangerous. It's called the walking dead, because people are not able to function on it. They run into poles, and I'm sure this lieutenant over here knows about it. It's no joke. So, you know, I'm encouraging the city maybe put it in their budget to get the NORCAN and carry it with you. Thank you very much. Ladies, have a great night.
We have no additional speakers for this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just had a question really quick for Assistant City Manager. On the Three Sisters Garden land, what support has the city provided?
That is one of our city-owned lots, so we provide the land to be used as a garden without any, asking for any lease payments or anything. It's part of our urban farm program. So we provide support in terms of providing the land available.
And also the water that is contributing to, I think, you know, as far as-
For irrigation.
For irrigation.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we've- That's been for several years?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. No, no, we've closed the public comment. I wanted- Excuse me? Alfred, please, please have a seat. I can chat with you later. And next, under the City Manager's office is a presentation of the proclamation recognizing June 2023 as Pride Month. And we have Reverend Scott Hill. I will read the proclamation, but if you'd like to come up to the podium and just receive it, then after that, if you can provide a few remarks, and I believe others also want to provide some remarks, and then we will, after that concludes, all those that would like to join in a photo with the city council, we will go down, and anybody's welcome to participate in the photo. And so I'll begin with the proclamation of the city council. From the city of West Sacramento designating June 2023 as Pride Month, whereas the city of West Sacramento LGBTQIA+ community members support the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas all people regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, and physical challenges have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings, and whereas the city of West Sacramento accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believe a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community, and whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersexual, asexual ally communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the city of West Sacramento, and whereas the city of West Sacramento envisions a world where every member of the LGBTQIA+ family has the freedom to live their truth without fear and with equality under the law. And while we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas to acknowledge the efforts to bring awareness to the continuing evolution to the pride movement, the city of West Sacramento will display the rainbow flag representing light, healing, sun, calmness, art, and spirit in front of City Hall for the month of June. Now therefore be it hereby proclaimed by the city of West Sacramento that June 2023 be designated as Pride Month in the city of West Sacramento, and that our residents be encouraged to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQIA+ community face and celebrate their contributions that enhance our city proclaimed this seventh day of June 2023. Reverend Scott Hill, we will go down and hand this to you, but for now, do you have any comments?
I humbly and graciously proud to live and be a part of this city and this community. And I'm so thankful for our city mothers for making this happen. I was at the Davis Pride on Sunday, and so many of our West Sacramento residents came and stopped by our booth. And I told them about this evening, and they were just in awe and were so grateful and thankful also. So I not only come and speak for myself, but so many of the LGBTQI community that still have to remain in the closet. I come with my gratitude, but I also come with you with a wish. And I'm gonna read a posting that I made, I believe yesterday on my Facebook page, that kind of gives the desire of the dream that I have for not only it's West Sacramento, but all across the world. And let me open that page real quick. I did, the city clerk gave me time to speak, and I'm so gracious for that. And I told him, how long do I have? Because as a preacher, we used to preach all afternoon. So I'm gonna keep it as short and maybe under three minutes. So let me pull up the page, and it's really short. I apologize, I had it open, but- It has been a challenge for me to understand the concept of pride. The scriptures teaches that we should be humble and have humility. An example is Proverbs 29:23. Pride brings a person low, but a lowly person in spirit gains honor. The festivals and celebrations of the LGBTQ+ community embraces us as an opportunity to us to gain dignity and respect that has been so long been denied. We are all God's children. We are all created in God's image. God loves each and every single one of us equally. Therefore, as children of God, we should teach and share God's love equally. Wouldn't it be nice to live in a community and a world that celebrates our diversity, that we do not have to stand up and have a month that celebrates pride or celebrates our diversity? And I ask that all of us makes that happen. Amen.
And I clerk, I'd like to request to speak at this time?
We do. Alex Hirsch.
Good evening, Mayor Guerrero, and members of the city council. My name is Alex Hirsch, and I'm here tonight as a resident of West Sacramento, as a member of the River City Democratic Club of West Sacramento, but most importantly, as a proud ally of the LGBTQIA+ community. I want to thank the city council tonight for its resolution proclaiming June as Pride Month. You know, it was in this building nearly 20 years ago that our former mayor came up publicly as part of that community, and he was nationally celebrated for that, rightfully so. And yet, almost 20 years later, we still find ourselves living in a time where many members of that community are ostracized, are not free to live their truth. I saw just yesterday, down in Southern California, down in Glendale, there was fighting in the streets, literally, fighting outside of a government building because of the government recognizing this pride. Similarly, as a member of the Friends of the Library, I saw that earlier this month, one of the school districts in Southern California banned a book describing the LGBTQ+ community. And again, I think that these battles should have been fought many years ago, that there's no reason that in 2023, we continue to relitigate this issue and have to fight to make sure that every member of the West Sacramento community and members of the LGBTQ+ community throughout the world have to fight for their freedom to live their truth without fear, to have to fight for equality under the law. And so I just want to take today to personally thank every member of the city council and the city of West Sacramento for standing united and in solidarity with all of West Sacramento's community, supporting June as Pride Month. Thank you very much.
We have no additional requests to speak.
We'd like to allow for council, a couple of minutes to speak, if you'd like.
I will appeal to my colleagues.
Yeah, I'll go first. Scott, my niece Sarah and her wife Gio attended the Davis event. They said it was great. And I'm really happy that everyone supports June as Pride Month. I was watching the news, and it's really scary when you see some of the stuff that's going on in places like Florida. So just, you know, we have to continue to support each other, as you said, and I remember that, and you said it so beautifully, you know, we are all special to God. And that's what's so disheartening, many of these, I'm gonna say it, some of these, you know, extreme evangelical movements that are behind a lot of the hate. So thank you for standing strong.
So for me, this time has been just a really scary time to just be alive. And sometimes it feels like we're going backwards. For me, one of- Um, for, for me, one of many reasons why, uh, Pride Month is so important and why I think proclamations like this is so important is so that individuals who live in our community, or maybe who don't live in our community, know that we see you, you are welcome, you are included, and you belong here. And you should not have to hide who you are. I remember growing up and, um, I played basketball, uh, and we're like family. And I remember going to college and one of my teammates who I had played, uh, ball with for years, right? Growing up at high school, um, she came out in college. And, and again, we, we went road trips, everything. This was, this is my road dog. And I had no idea, no clue, she was gay. And I think back now, the idea that she had to hide who she was her entire childhood and high school, and it wasn't until we left home that she felt like she could be herself. I cannot imagine that for my own children and quite frankly, for our entire community and the children that are here now. It breaks my heart that anyone, especially a child, would feel like they could not be true to themselves. And so I hope that this, even though it may seem small, that everyone, including our children who are in our schools, know that they are welcomed here and that we wrap our arms around you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight, Reverend. So yesterday, the Human Rights Campaign declared a national state of emergency for the LGBTQ. So it is scary. Over 75 anti-LGBTQ bills have been signed into law this year alone, more than doubling last year's number. Earlier today, I was speaking with a friend who happens to be trans and talked about how scary this is and how important it is for allies to stand up and use our place of privilege to do the work. Ally is a verb. This is action. And I'm proud to live in a city that rep- that recognizes June as Pride Month. I'm proud we flew the trans flag. I am very plat- proud we're flying the pride flag. And so I'm proud to be in a city that represents, elevates, but more importantly, protects our LGBTQ community, especially our kids. This is, West Sacramento is a community for all, and this council will fight to protect our kids and our families. So we are here. And I, I will mention, when you talk about it being scary, is last night, the mayor and I were in front of city hall with a few people, um, here in this room with our proclamation of West Sacramento, uh, National Gun Violence Prevention Day. And while we were out there, somebody yelled to us nastiness about the pride flag hanging. I was there with my two young children. It was scary. There were about five of us out there, and it was a very loud man. And immediately I was thinking, who's going to protect us? And that's not what we want in this community. So we will fly that flag, we will stand with the LGBTQ community. We have your backs, and so please know that. And thank you for being here tonight. Pride in Sacramento is happening this weekend. Having two small boys, I'm looking forward to taking them to the parade on Sunday. Events like Davis Pride, thank you for being there, and thank you for sharing your love and joy with the community and all of the work that you do in this space.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Reverend, for, for coming and, and saying those kind words and, and, and sharing your time with us tonight. Uh, this is the seventh proclamation, seventh year that I've had the opportunity to sit with this group and, 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 uh, do June as Pride Month. More, the majority of that time, uh, we actually did have representation on this council by someone from this community. And, uh, it, it's, it's crazy, um, to think that, you know, as much as we are a diverse group of policymakers and leaders in this community, we still don't have that representation. And I, I, I look back and I, I appreciate the proclamation today. The one thing I, I do want to remark is that for the last 22, 24 years, we did have someone up on this dais who, uh, led that charge and did so courageously. And I will, uh, in the words of Alex Hirsch, who, who, uh, reminded us of that, uh, back in 2006, at the state of the city, uh, during his remarks, uh, Mayor, then Mayor Christopher Cabaldin came out publicly, uh, to a group of 150 developers and leaders and, and business owners and whoever it was in the crowd, and did so fearlessly and, and with cur- with courage and bravery. And it was a remarkable, uh, moment that was captured in a video called, it was by MTV, The Coming Out Stories. And I've had the opportunity to watch it. I tell you, in that moment, I saw what leadership really meant in this city because it wasn't a very friendly place, and I can't say that it necessarily is because I don't represent the LGBTQIA+ community, and I don't know what the backlash must be like. I, I guess anecdotally, but not personally. But to stand in front of a group of people not knowing what that response might be and being truly authentically you, uh, that shouldn't have to be, uh, such a heavy lift. There, um, Renee Brown said owning our stories and, and loving ourselves through that process is the bravest thing that anyone could ever do. And, uh, back then, Christopher, uh, Cabaldin was interviewed by the Sacramento Beat. He said, "The pressure and the stigma and sometimes the all-too-casual bigotry in this town made it painfully clear that when I first ran for office, I could either be, I could either serve this community or I could be a gay man, but I could not be both." And he decided to disclose that he was a gay man, uh, because he wanted to, uh, give other gays and lesbians and, and others the opportunity to make their sexual orientation public, uh, much easier, uh, by his example. I am absolutely proud of tonight. I'm proud of that flag that's flying in front of our city hall. And I read the comments, I know what some folks think. But I, I know it also takes a lot of courage and bravery to, to stand strong with fortitude and know that until, uh, bigotry and anti, um, lesbian, gay, bisexual sentiment wears away, we should frankly, we will always fly that flag. It shouldn't be a month, it should be all the time. So thank you to my colleagues and, and thank you, uh, to all the folks who stand and support. It's a proud day, uh, for pride in the city of West Sacramento.
Thank you, Ma- Mayor Protamorosco.
Reverend Hill, I just want to say thank you for your leadership on behalf of West Sacramento and on behalf of, you know, all of my colleagues here who have embraced, um, making sure that we recognize our LGBTQA members of our community. I recall that, um, there was a, a member of our community, Leanne, who wanted to coordinate because there was a request to coordinate, um, an LGBTQA support group. And when that was done, I, I, the feedback we heard was there were members of the community that were afraid of attending the meetings still to this day, of coming out publicly. And so knowing that, knowing that and, and really just compassionately empathizing, that I don't think any one of us can speak for anyone else about what their experience is like, what that fear, what that trauma, what it is they're sensing about coming out publicly or not. Only the individual themselves, and we just hope and pray that we provide that support, that love, that embrace for those individuals who need it, more so now than they ever have before. Because we have got to fight, and we have got to fight hard for those rights and that privilege, for you to be yourself and to be embraced and to be loved and to have equality and to not be discriminated in the workplace or in public, or even as we're standing out there, you know, condescending remarks about the pride flag. We're here to defend you, we're here to protect you, we're here to walk with you as we have been. And I'm so grateful that we have people like you, Reverend Hill, to come and speak so gently, so honestly, speaking the truth of what we need to do as a community to ensure that we continue to be supportive and not hide behind anything. And I know that our past leadership has had his, his expression of what happened personally and his concerns. And I hope that we have a different West Sacramento today as a result of continuing the movement and making sure that we put the flag up and we embrace all individuals for who they are and not try to change them or transform them or hide the history or not speak publicly in schools. Because our children here are going to be faced with that. And we don't want them to learn bigotry or, or any kind of inequality that, that they could possibly face. We want them to treat everyone with respect and love. So thank you, and I just want to say thank you to my colleagues. And with that, we will go down and take this photo with, with anybody who would like to come up for a photo with us.
We will now move to our consent agenda items, 3217. Are there any requests to remove an item by any of the council members? If not, Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Oh, ma'am. The individual that had a request to speak on items has left.
Would you like to just announce the name, just to make sure?
Alfred Melbourne.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I will close the public comment, bring it back to council, accept a motion.
Early moves?
Second. Third. Madam Clerk, I think, um, Mayor Protamorosco moved it?
Early moved.
Early did. Oh, council member early moved. And then, um, Mayor Protamorosco seconded?
No, I think it was down there.
Hey, who seconded? It is a man. Councilmember Akala seconded.
Councilmember Sapizio Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Protamorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye, thank you. This item is approved. Next, we will go to, there is no public hearing or regular agenda items. We'll go to our general administration function, part two. Do we have any reports of, from our council assignments? Uh, council member Early?
Okay, I, um, I'm, I will, I'll be fast as I see the room clearing out. So, uh, May 4th, I, I, um, attended the CCOG Transportation Committee, um, in which, again, we continue, um, to, uh, move forward on the, and discuss the, um, the AD expansion, um, and the, the tolling, um, potential for the causeway. Um, May 8th, attended the, uh, it's now not Yolo County, but YTD Transportation Board meeting, in which we reviewed a draft budget, um, for, uh, transportation. And so that will move forward at the next meeting, um, but we did get the draft. Uh, May 11th, um, actually, you will probably talk more about this, but attended the Greater Sacramento, uh, Annual Celebration, or you may have already talked about it. May 15th, attended the Bike Share Policy Steering Committee. May 24th, uh, attended two meetings, Yolo County Housing Authority, in which we approved the, um, housing, the county housing budget. And then also right after, I now chaired the New Hope, um, CDC, um, and we approved, uh, that budget as well, um, on May 24th. On, um, May 30th, um, actually took a tour, and I think this, I just want to encourage, um, folks who haven't already done this, um, the DARM realm, which is right across the street. Um, it was, uh, pretty amazing. And so, uh, and, and they are asking and wanting to expand and, and wanting, um, the public to feel more welcome there. And so that's why I, I raised it up. On May 34th, 31st, had an ad hoc for the Yolo Transportation District, um, uh, around staffing policies. May 31st, again, um, attended River City Graduation, um, which was amazing to be able to go there and support our youth as they are, are graduating. And then today had the Port Commission, um, in which, is this good? Can I? Yes, okay. Um, in which we, um, moved forward the agreement for the lease, uh, with SSA and actually extended, um, that particular contract from being three to five years with, uh, five-year term, one year, um, after that option, um, for five years. Um, and then also today attended another ad hoc, um, committee for the Yolo Transportation District meeting. And I'm positive I missed one, but that was a decent rundown.
Okay, thank you. Any other council members? Councilmembers of easy one?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. On May 18th, we had our regular meeting of the West Sacramento Flood Control Agency, SAFCA. We adopted our operating budget, and we had project updates. And I do believe later this year, we will be getting an update date from staff on our flood protection program. If anybody needs a specific date, I can look into that for you. I was with Dante at graduation, River City High School graduation. Would love to talk about bringing that net down. Poor parents could not take pictures of their kids. I feel like that needs to be a conversation at some point. And then had the honor of attending Gemini Bio's kind of ribbon cutting and press release for their new, um, state-of-the-art biotech facility here in West Sacramento. Mayor presented, uh, was there and spoke at the event. But what was really powerful to hear was the partnership between the city of West Sacramento, our staff, and the Greater Sacramento Economic Development Council, and how they wrapped their arms around that business to make sure that they could get through permitting with all of the issues that were happening during the pandemic, from permitting to 45 weeks to getting their air conditioner unit to attracting talent to that. So I just want to thank city staff and our economic development team and everyone who worked on that project because it was very clear from the Gemini Bio team how grateful they were for the city of West Sacramento and all the work that we did to welcome them to the community. That's it, thank you.
Well, I'm not going to report out on any of the committees. It's a little, um, outdated at this point, but I did want to mention that I did attend the, uh, Native Heritage Museum event, they had community, um, input. And there were some, it was very well attended. I didn't attend the two o'clock, the 10 o'clock, I think it was the earlier session from 12, but I attended the two o'clock, and even though it was hot, there were at least 60 people there when I went. Very few chairs left. And, uh, the, we're still some time out. They don't see any groundbreaking for at least seven to 10 years, that's what they're telling us. The state awarded them 100 million, I believe, is what they said. But they're still looking at 300 million to really get the, the museum because it's going to be a very comprehensive, uh, museum. It's, um, they were actually asking the public, um, for ideas of what the museum should look like. They were asking what types of exhibits they should have, what kind of, um, programs they should have. Uh, they wanted, um, input also on, uh, things like, what, what would bring people into West Sacramento? And there were some great ideas, people not only from District One, where the museum would be, but from District Two, Three, Four, they were all there. And they were talking about things like bringing in water taxis in. That would be, I think, a really cool idea. Um, I've seen it on the River Walk in, uh, Texas, and, um, there were other ideas as well. I made some little notes, and I can't, I better put my glasses on here. Folks said they wanted to see gardens, they wanted to see, um, sweat lodges. There would be certain, um, particular things that would only be, um, available to people of Native American heritage. And they were talking about, um, having things like, um, uh, language. The, the native languages of California being taught- of California being taught, and also making it a home for all Native Americans, as well as a school for the public to learn more about the culture. So, it's a really good event, and I believe they said they were going to have another one soon. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I'll be really short. On May eleventh, it could have been May thirteenth, we, Oscar, Supervisor Oscar Villegas and I attended the Echo Water Project Resource Recovery Facility, which was a ribbon cutting many years in the making. Essentially, this is a project that prevents thirty thousand pounds of ammonia from reaching our delta every day and has a fantastic effort to protect public health environment, and it's funded by Clean Water Act grants, and it's been about thirteen years in the making. Over the past seven years, I've served on as a board member of Regional Sand, we have been waiting a very long time to see this project come to fruition. It's the largest agricultural water project in the state. That was going to be the end of my presentation, however, given Councilmember Early's reference to the Greater Sacramento Economic Council event, I did attend only the first thirty minutes, but left because there was, I want to commend staff, especially the Disney goofy movie that took place in Bright Park, which was an incredible, incredible success. We had a dance party, like last-second dance party with about sixty kids, to bad music. I don't, I don't know that I would have chosen that particular song, was that you, Connie? Okay, sorry. Next year, I'm choosing the music, but I want, there's no way to make a community come alive than by having the kids involved in Dancing Under the Stars. And there were dozens of families that brought their lawn chairs, I love that we did that, and I want to commend Parks' staff for working with Disney to help that come along. And just for some historical context, we created this relationship with Disney back in 2014 and have had the opportunity to work together in order to bring outside resources to the city, and there's nothing like bringing magic of Disney alive. And the one park where we actually have a Disney playground, so just wanted to extend those kudos, I'm grateful to have been able to witness that, and I look forward to many in the future. Thank you.
I just want to also thank the Parks and Rec Department here, who, staff who put a lot of work into making, not only that event, but Rhythm on the River is what I attended, I don't know if you've checked it out, but that was a lot of fun. And bringing in the Syncopated Monkeys, who are, you know, are our own wonderful jazz band, so just thank you so much for organizing that, and I think they're going to be on the fourth Thursday of every month, correct? Yes, and so I would highly recommend checking it out. So, on my docket, I, you know, spent the weekend in Columbus, Ohio with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, great turnout. They have their annual meeting, it's when we take up a number of resolutions, and one of the resolutions, I've been working with the National Health Forum, on Move with the Mayor, it's with CDC, and what we're trying to do is get, they connect with mayors all across, you know, the nation, to encourage the community to work together, and I partnered, you know, with our May is Bike Month, you know, so, and I put a booth out there, that's why you saw me out there, because it was part of the campaign with Move with the Mayor, and to promote how movement actually helps improve mental health. So, they asked me to sponsor, you know, put forward and sponsor the resolution, which I was really grateful for that opportunity, and that's what I did, and just trying to, you know, continue to encourage other mayors across the nation to participate, and that's what we did, we were out there campaigning to get more mayors involved, to participate in that effort. And more about this, about the meeting, it's to set up cities up for success. It's an opportunity to obtain investments that the federal government is putting forward, you know, signed, you know, passed by Congress and signed by President Biden in the past two years, including the American Rescue Plan Act. So, that funding that we have invested, I have informed the National Health Forum, which they're doing a little background and researching more on some of the investments that we made with our partners, and the Inflation Reduction Act, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, and the CHIPS and Science Act. And also taking a look at, you know, what we can do to learn from other jurisdictions, it's an opportunity where, you know, there are panels, and then all the mayors engage on what we're doing, and we've done quite a bit in relation to addressing homelessness. I think West Sacramento has been very successful in doing more. We're also looking at public safety issues and effective police reform and gun safety. So there's, you know, just a lot, a lot of gun violence, and we recognized that, you know, National Gun Safety Awareness Month, so we, you know, we're contributing to that. The other benefit is to, you know, connect with the President, the President Biden's administration, the White House staff are always present and accessible, HUD, you know, are all the region representatives were there, and there were, you know, a few meetings on how to address housing, affordable housing and homelessness, and I will say that across the nation, there are a lot of concerns around those with chronic mental illness, substance use issues, and those are the challenges that all mayors face, is that we're having a hard time being able to connect people to services. Mayor Bass, being a new mayor, who has this new program called Home Safe, and, you know, working in my other hat, I help her out on seeing what we can do in, you know, in the legislature. That, I think, is, has been very effective. Some of the challenges she finds is maybe is building faster transitional housing, and I know that, you know, we've contributed to what we could contribute here with Project Home Key. I think we have a benefit in that we don't have the forty thousand, fifty thousand-plus individuals that are, you know, unsheltered right now. So, she's, she's got quite the challenge in her hands and other, you know, individuals who I'm going to continue to, I sat down with Amanda earlier this week, and I said, these are some ideas that I heard about, these are some examples, handed her brochures, and I said, and we're going to have continued follow-up discussions about these ideas, because I think we do need to bring home some of, some of the, you know, good things that are going on in other jurisdictions. And also, you know, the other challenge that I think other mayors address is how the state government continues to impose on local government, some, you know, statutory changes on how we can use our public land. So I will say that Erin, not, not, you know, and we have a support position on this bill, has been taking the lead on working to address a particular requirement that if we have, like say, for example, Pheasant Club, we have to put it up for, you know, under public housing, so that, you know, if, you know, we can't as a city just go and decide what to do with that, it's public land, we purchased it, and it has a sixty-day clock. And so, you know, we want, we do do and establish affordable housing, and we have housing for the unhoused available countywide, but there's still this onerous requirement that I think, you know, hopefully this legislation will succeed, but that is something that is an example of the impact that has in West Sacramento. So, you know, I believe, you know, my attendance was, was really important to participate and work together with other mayors throughout the nation, and I'm really grateful for that opportunity. Another event that we participated in as a city, we had a couple, you know, one from the Police Department and one from the Fire Department, who addressed fireworks, Cal Cities put together an event on what we can do to address illegal fireworks and some of the challenges that all jurisdictions have. I mean, here the complaints, the guns shooting off, the illegal mortars going out in the air, so, you know, we continue to work on that, sometimes it's a little late, but I just want to make sure that you are aware that I think we still have some work that we can do, ideas that I've, that I've heard from there, and just continue with the administration to see what we, what is implementable to try to curb some of the illegal activity outdoors. In addition to that, I, in the Cal City Sac Valley Division, went up to Redding, and we had a chance to hear from the Center of Budget Priorities to be able to find out what's going on in the state budget, that is really bad right now, and we will anticipate a budget deal coming out, but it's just going to be really tough. Fortunately, they're not making cuts, but, you know, it, I mean, it could, it could etch up a little bit, so, you know, there could be a mild recession. So we're just continuing to, you know, monitor what's going on, any impact to our funding sources that we are, like the I Street Bridge, for example, things like that, those are things that we're monitoring to make sure that we preserve and fight for and maintain in our partnership with the state. The other is for the, you know, they have this emergency operations, a room, where they get to see all throughout their region where there are, you know, where there's smoke coming up, and that's how they stop the spread of a massive fire. So, they have cameras all throughout, you know, the region, and that camera is able to detect, you know, some, some fires that they can deploy emergency services and stop the fire from spreading quickly. And so I thought that was, you know, a pretty good presentation in their Office of Emergency Services, their Operations Center, I want to have one of those so you know. But, but you know that, you know, Canada having the significant fire, that, you know, we may have strike teams who may go out there, I don't know if they do, but we may, and I always appreciate our firefighters who, you know, take the time out of their personal lives to get involved in doing things like that. Police department gets sent out sometimes for public safety reasons as well to protect the community during those situations. So with that, that concludes my update, and we have to have a commission replacement. And I put, can you give us a little background for that?
Yes, we have multiple openings on our boards and commissions right now, we have one opening on the Transportation, Mobility and Infrastructure Commission, we have two openings on the Public Financing Authority, and we have one opening on, darn it, Board of Appeals.
And, and we are requesting more applications at?
Yes, our recruitment is open, the application links are available on the website, and if you contact the city clerk's office, we can send you a hard copy of an application if you need it, and we are recruiting until July seventeenth.
And at that point, would you be able to do the shared documents so that we can take a look at who we can select and have conversation among the council members?
Yes, ma'am, and then I would anticipate the appointments being made at the July, I think it's nineteenth meeting or the first meeting in August.
Okay, thank you. It, it won't interfere with the commission meetings?
No, we still have a quorum for every commission.
Okay, good. Great, thank you for that update. Next is council calendar.
Good evening. Tomorrow morning at ten a.m., we have the West Gateway Place Two groundbreaking over at West Gateway Place Two with Jamboree Housing, and then until later this month, we have a few events, Youth Fire Academy Luncheon on June twenty-third at Station Forty-Five, and the Fire Academy Graduation is June twenty-ninth at six a.m. at the Press.
Thank you, and I believe Councilmember Early has.
Thank you.
I got you, girl.
It's all of our bits. So on June sixteenth, five-thirty to eight-thirty at Bridgeway Lakes Community Park, we will have our first annual Juneteenth event, we're really excited about that. The mayor will be presenting a proclamation, I hope I'm not speaking for you. Okay. For Juneteenth, and Larry Lee, who is the owner of The Observer, The Observer is the region's African-American, Black American newspaper, they turn sixty this year, and so they will be accepting this proclamation, we're really, really excited, and hopefully everyone can attend.
Other events? City managers' report? Okay, city attorneys' report?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction from city council members? Okay, and future agenda items, I didn't see anything, so I guess anything. And I would like to adjourn in the memory Patty Masic, she has been an employee here, and, you know, just continuing to contribute and dedicate her life to the well-being of our city, really grateful for what she's accomplished, that her contributions will not be forgotten, we will always remember and express our gratitude to her and her family, and does our condolences to her and her family, to her family, sorry, her loss, so young, letting this, I'd like to adjourn in her memory.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to add that she was a retired annuaent in the development engineering and a key member of our operations with the city for over twenty years. I know that many of the staff are heartbroken over her loss, apparently, a little over a week or two ago, she found out she had an aggressive form of cancer and passed away last night, and given, given, you know, some of the recent development on this council, I just, I think that, you know, it just reminds us to take every day and appreciate it, we didn't make it to the time when we could have sent flowers or a card because she passed away so quickly, but, you know, it's just a reminder, just as deep as it was for us to, to fly that flag and do so with courage, just to live every day with courage and go home and hug our loved ones. Thank you.
Are you making the motion?
Thank you. I, yes, I, I move to adjourn in, in memory of Patty Masic, please.
Thank you, in a second. Early second.
Councilmember Sapizio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Protamorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. We are adjourned, thank you.